It appears that it's working there. And then it works.
You work for yourself.
Alright, we're ready, Mayor.
Alright. Alright, I'm gonna call this Thursday, May 28th, Budget Workshop to Order. Invitation, Mr. Flexon, do you wanna?
Sure. Dear Father, thank you for the city you've given us, thank you for the rain you've sent our way. We want to thank you for that. Thank you for protecting our employees and everybody on council during this pandemic we're having. We ask you to continue to protect the city, our employees, the state, the nation. We bid the leaders on a national level, state level out here. And Fountain, we're thankful for them. You've given us and provided for us. And be with us to make decisions that fulfill your desires and what you want us to do. And we ask all these things of your name. Amen.
Give it up. Thank you, Flex.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we're going over the general, the governmental funds, general fund, option sales tax, road fund, solid waste and victims fund. Turn it over to Ms. Reed and Mr. Bell.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to say, welcome, everybody. It's good to see everybody in, in person. I know it's, it's been a while. And I also wanted to let everybody, or just remind everyone that we are live streaming to the city's Facebook page currently. I wanted to start off by thanking Naomi and her staff for doing a really excellent job on this year's budget. This has definitely been the toughest budget I know we've ever had to put together. A lot of constraints with employees working from home. Also, just the uncertainty of revenue and certain expenditures because of COVID-19. But tonight, what we presented to you all is a balanced budget. We have already had a work session to go over our enterprise funds, which would be the natural gas, sewer, and also hospitality tax. Tonight, we're gonna be discussing basically our general fund. And this is a conservative budget. It assumes no millage increase or major fee increase. I think it should be noted that a lot of municipalities across the country are laying employees off. They're giving no pay increases, they're reducing operating expenditures by a certain percentage. And a lot of them are deferring large capital facility and equipment purchases. And as you will see, even though this is a very conservative budget, fortunately Fountain is in a financial position to be able to do none of those things. We are able to actually add personnel, give pay increases, increase some operating expenditures, and, and still be able to make capital, equipment, and facility upgrades. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Reed to go over a PowerPoint this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council and Department heads for all of your hard work as well, helping us get this budget prepared. I will start tonight just by going over a brief summary of our budget highlights, the process. Remind everyone of council's goals that we kept in mind as we prepared the budget. Move to each department and pause in between each one of them to allow for questions and any comments from department heads if council has any, like any feedback. So as you all recall, at the beginning of the year, we did a council retreat where we identified council's goals and initiatives, and they were broken down into three categories. Our must do, should do's, and could do's. So I'll just remind you all of those. The must do's was to focus on economic development efforts in terms of recruitment, retention, promotion, and product development. Identify funding and financing options for implementing facility equipment upgrades along with increasing personnel and their pay. Evaluate insurance, fringe benefits, and compensation levels for the city employees, and evaluate the competitiveness of the city's classification and cop plan. The should do's was to update the city's web presence, have a secure platform for paying natural gas bills, incorporate marketing strategies, brand equity, and use a tool for community engagement and communication. You'll see that reflected in the budget as we've increased our lines for websites significantly to rebrand ourselves and put a website together that reflects Fountain's standard and to control growth, balance economic development with preservation of Fountain's traditional hometown feel. And then finally, our could do's. Make improvements in accessibility sidewalks and parking facilities to support downtown. Sidewalks should be safe and accessible along corridors, add additional handicap parking spaces in downtown. We may not have addressed the whole item, but we did make some strides in increasing our road, road, sorry, road fund improvements by $50,000 as from a transfer from gas fund to make some strides in our road improvement. More cooperative initiatives between the city and chamber to plan and promote and coordinate special events, which we discussed in our last workshop when we discussed hospitality tax in our enterprise funds, and improve, improve employer retention. So we will move to our budget highlights. As Sean mentioned, this budget contemplates no millage increase. We did budget a 3% cost of living adjustment to take effect the first full pay period. Sorry, beginning July 1st, so use the same first full pay period. A 1% increase in our, in the employer contribution to our South Carolina retirement system and our police retirement system. In the prior year's budget, you'll see that it was reimbursed from the state. At 1%, this year, we did not get notice that that reimbursement would be happening. Health insurance, our city is now contributing at a higher rate for dependent healthcare coverage. And we, as a recommendation from our public works department, consolidated our streets department and then now created the solid waste fund to reflect all sanitation costs in the sanitation and solid waste fund. We increased the transfer in from hospitality tax for special events by $25,000 and restructured the streets department. Continuing, the positions that we funded was a planning and development director, assistant public works director, one detective in the police department, and one crew worker. The unfunded positions that was requested by our staff was a fire marshal, code enforcement officer, full-time sports coordinator, part-time judicial clerk, six firefighters, a full-time accountant, full-time certified officer, one full-time CDL driver, and one full-time crew workers, crew worker, excuse me. The capital items and projects that we funded was our 2020 computer replacement plan, phase two of the wayfinding project, mass arms project. We replace, we will be adding two additional police vehicles. Fire department roof replacement for both station one and two. LEC, which is our law enforcement center entry upgrades, replacing the keypad there to make it a more secure building. Fifty sections of replacement hose in our fire department, a garbage and debris truck for sanitation, the MDT printers and scanners for our police department, and door replacement at our activity center. Before I continue, does anyone have any questions?
I'll save them to the end. I've got quite a few.
Okay. As we developed this budget, we had to keep in mind the impact that COVID would have on our revenues. And so we identified the top areas of revenues that we get from different sources and just wanted to talk through that with, between Sean and ourselves and the departments and just really put a strategy together for making sure we're taking into all of the possible negative effects of COVID. So the property tax revenue, we assumed that we would not be collecting any delinquent tax revenue, so we did not include that amount in our property tax revenue line. Our business license revenue, as you all know, businesses were impacted by the closure for the first quarter of the fiscal year, of the calendar, excuse me. And we do not know what the fall is gonna bring. And so as of today, we are, we brought in $750,000 of business license revenue. So we budgeted a 6% decrease in that number. Just trying to, not really knowing what the future is gonna hold, we feel like that's a safe number. It really puts us kind of back at where we budgeted for this fiscal year. We're projecting a 20% decrease in court fines. We're seeing that decrease now as the court system is closed through the end of this year. We're anticipating when it opens back up, a lot of defendants are gonna say, hey, Judge, I don't have the money. And, and judges may say, we'll give you time to pay, or different options for securing their fines. Franchise fees revenue, projecting a 2%, 2% increase in revenue instead of the 4% to 5% growth we typically budget. And then projecting a significant decrease in grant revenues as entities are kind of holding on the funding right now. And as far as expenditures, here today, we have not seen a significant increase outside of our normal cleaning and some personal protective equipment for our departments. But all of the purchases that we've made, we've developed a mechanism to track them, and we've identified organizations or the federal government to reimburse this at some level, recognizing that if it's female, it may take some time to get those mon, those monies back. This is just a quick graphic of our breakdown of revenues. Did not put the percentages on here, but I will talk about those. Tax revenue makes up 31% of revenues, franchise fees 8%, our license and permits 24%, grants and fines is just, just a little over 1%. Our other county revenue, which is our fire service area, makes up 13%. Other revenues such as charges, volleyball fees, football fees, that makes up 2%. And other financing sources, which is our transfers, makes up 16% of our revenues. That also includes the budgeted use of fund balance to fund capital items this fiscal year. So I will start with the breakdown by department. Like I said, I'll go through the department and then either pause for questions or just go right through them and we can get questions at the end. As you'll see in the packet, the 410, it's labeled the general government department. There's our non-governmental items like our website, email, special projects is funded in that department. There is a small personnel expense for city employee incentives of $6,000. We maintain that budget. Our operating expenditures increased by 5% to include grounds maintenance. In the council retreat, some council members expressed interest in bringing back the hanging baskets. So that is in this budget. Our website and email expense increased. Our website and email expense increased, like I said earlier, to make our web presence a little bit more suitable. And it's offset by a reduction in professional fees and maintenance agreements, which we are ending our retail strategy, retail strategies agreement. And so we've reduced that deadline by that dollar amount. Capital, capital projects funded in our general government is the mass arms project, wayfinding sign project, and our woodside street scape project. There's also a new line in the budget, the transfer out from our general fund to solid waste fund. It's just replacing the streets department expenses, so I dissolved the streets department. Public works is made up of public works, streets department, solid waste, recycle, sanitation. It's just a whole mess. So we just cleaned it up and diverted those expenses to the right line items. Any questions for 410?
What about, there's a pretty significant increase in landscaping, grounds maintenance in this one, I think, is 410, yeah? On the spreadsheet? I assume it's just a...
The hanging basket.
Oh, that's, that's...
Yes, the cost for hanging baskets is $17,000. Our...
They're gonna look nice.
Yeah, that's fine. I thought we took over someone's yard.
No. We do have the basket, if I'm correct, Lori. We best flower the maintenance and liners.
That'd be great. They look, they look great.
Ever since I've been here, I've been hearing about these hanging baskets.
Pretty.
They look pretty cool.
How are we gonna water?
Public Works!
Public Works was, before we took them down, was handling the watering of the flowers. They borrowed a fire department truck and...
The fire department gave us a water truck. When they got a new truck, so we used the water truck.
There's no way to run water.
That, I, we didn't explore that.
Now, I may volunteer to water some.
Excuse me?
I said I may volunteer to water some.
Write that down.
Okay, for our administration department, that is our finance team, human resources, and our city clerk. Personnel expenditures increased by 25%. There was some reorganization in the department and 3% increases. It includes an allocation of a full-time staff person to other funds as well. Our staff accountant, Stephanie, she is now being budgeted in the general fund as well. Before, when she was just the enterprise fund accountant, all of her salaries in enterprise ones. And then the salary increases being, employees being promoted in the admin department. Our operating expenditures increased by 22% for IT and internet. I think we discussed in detail with our departments about the cost of having redundant internet. If something goes down, we have a backup so that we're never out of business. We can still maintain operations. Cell phone expense, I have been using, Andrew's been using our personal cell phones and just wanna add that in there, dues and subscriptions for various organizations that we all are a part of, and that's the cost of increase in there. We did add a human resource manager as well, and so we assume that there will be some dues and subscriptions for that person as well. Server upgrade for our accounting software server that needs to be done and replacement of two computers with laptops. Any questions for admin? Our judicial department, that's court, personnel expenditures increased by 1, 7%, excuse me. That's the 3% cost of living increase and then just other, the other fringe benefit increases. Our operating expenditures increased by 2%. We didn't have any major contributors outside of internet. Internet across the city has just gone up. And our capital line item decreased by 98% because the parking lot should be complete this fiscal year and does not have any additional capital outlay, with the exception of a printer that Judge Finley needs. Any questions for judicial? Mayor and, Mayor and council expenditures, personnel expenditures decreased by 17%. And in our prior, our current fiscal year budget, we were in the middle of election year, so we didn't know who was gonna take the insurance. Still don't know. So we, we just have three elected officials for employer paid benefits. If that changes, we can make those changes before first reading. And then operating expenditures increased by 6%. And that's just properly budgeting for the expenses for mayor and council. It's like $1,000. Our special events department had some reorganization as well. The planning and development, community development director position dissolved and created a planning and development director position. And is now being budgeted in our planning and development department. So you'll see that decrease, 34% reflects that change. It also includes a 3% cost of living increase and increased hours for our part-time staff in that department. We, we know that there's increased need for support during Christmas, and we budget appropriately. Operating expenditures increased 21%. Again, the internet. The marketing budget increased to fund the marketing plan. Now there's just a better plan to, to market our events that we're still able to have. Credit card fees and charges, we're, we're just looking at that citywide. When people pay online, all of those fees are absorbed by the city, but we want to, we're thinking about having those fees passed on to the customers for online sales and absorbing those fees and have transactions happen in-house. Added a line for uniform expense, rental lease expenditure. Heather and Ellen suggested that we move all of the rental. They rent tents and equipment for all of the events having in that line, and they're now tracked separately. Christmas festival expense increased to replace lights and purchase new items for the festival. And the sounds of summer increased as well, which was currently called, in the prior year's budget, Fridays by the Fountain and Saturday Bluegrass. So now it's combined to be Sound of Summer. Do you have any questions for Ellen in special events? And our police department, our capital items that we funded was keypad entry to the building. Equipment package for two additional vehicles. One of those vehicles will be for the new detective, MDT printers and scanners. I had originally planned to list the items that was unfunded, but wanted to make sure that these items got in the budget for safety reasons for the police department and then just for the officers that be able to do their reports in the vehicles. Those scanners are needed and printers. Personnel expenditures increased 2.5%, which includes a new detective position and includes a 3% cost of living increase. Operating expenditures increased 13.9% with the major contributor being the rental lease expenditure line for the lease of the two vehicles. We have a lease program with enterprise now, and that's how we're funding these purchases of the, for the leases of the vehicle.
The way that works is that those are four-year lease. And so the idea is to eventually have all of our police vehicles under that lease program, and so that every vehicle is getting replaced every four years.
So on the sounds of summer, you're saying we want increase to get higher quality band?
Yes, but the band, the cost of bands increase every year anyway. There are about three bands that cost a little bit more than our normal bands, which is our key band.
Showing a decrease in budget from last year to this year. You saw 15 down to 1,000.
Sounds of summer, probably Friday music, that, that one has an increase.
Yeah, it was...
You're looking the wrong place.
414, Sounds of Summer was 21,000, and in our current fiscal year, and proposing 27,300.
One of those this year would be, for instance, Craven Melon. It was a little bit more expensive.
Oh, yeah.
They were an opener for Hootie and the Blowfish back in the 90s. They kind of a...
Back in the day.
Yeah.
Any questions for police?
So when is the new detective starting?
We have it budgeted for July 1st start date. In our fire department, we budgeted an increase, increase of personnel expenses by 4%, which includes the 3% cost of living increase. Operating expenditures increased by 1%. The fire department is very lean. They, they, they have it all laid out, and their expenses are pretty standard every year. Capital, they have the 50 sections of replacement hose during our budget workshop with the fire department that, can't remember the year, but it's a very, very, a long time ago since they replaced holes in there. Putting, they're just taping it together sometimes to get to make sure it works. Roof repair at station one and two. There may be an increase there, but currently we have a budget at $30,000, $8,000 for station two and $22,000 for station one. There are the back section of the, the front section of the fire department needs to be replaced because when the second half was added, they didn't replace the roof totally. They just did the back half. So it's a really old roof up there.
Well, surprise, station two needs replacement, so quickly.
It's areas.
It's a, it's a metal roof, and actually the quotes that we got for both of those are kind of where they put some sort of a coating on it that should stop those, those leaks. So it's not a complete replace. It's more of a, a long-term, well, it's more of a long-term fix. Those coatings that have at least a 10-year warranty, some of them have up to a 20-year warranty on.
Any other questions about fire? In our public works department, the increase, 96%, it looks that large because of the restructuring of the department. We moved our maintenance technician from our 431 streets department over into 424, which is our public works department, also included the addition of an assistant public works director. We have that budgeted to start 1st of October. Restructured the streets department, 3% cost of living increase as well as budget, which contributes to that increase. Operating expenditures, since the streets department was restructured, restructured, you will see all of the landscaping from 431 moved over to 424. I even left the account numbers there, so it was easier to see how we separated the budget. The animal control and codes enforcement expenses is also there. And then utilities was the largest expense for all the street lights, about $125,000 annually. And then capital for the public works department, the vehicle for the assistant public works director. Any questions there? Our planning and development department, personnel expenditures increased by 66%, which includes the director position that was created. This department is, includes Kim Darnell, which is our business license and permit tech, and Greg Gordo's our planner, and then now the planning and development director that we're proposing. Also, 3% cost of living increase for this department as well. Operating expenditures increased by 102%. The RCI Building Official Services were under budgeted in this current fiscal year, and so now it's properly budgeted, budgeted to include plan reviews. And we just did a revision to the contract, and so this is also included and contributes to that cost increase.
There's a fee associated with that, correct?
It is. Yeah, there's a fee that offsets the plan review. It's a half the permit, kinda?
Kind of.
Yeah, half the permit cost for all permits is the plan review fee. Budgeted $120,000 in plan review revenue. And then computer and furniture for the proposed director position. Any other questions for planning and development? In our streets department, it's in your budget, but you'll see that column is zero all the way down because those lines were reallocated. And you'll see the transfer from the general fund to the solid waste fund totaling $446,000. And that's the cover of the deficit that now is shown in solid waste fund because the streets, all of the street expenditures that have something to do with sanitation is now budgeted there. The fee that we charge does not cover the cost of sanitation. So the general fund contributes $446,000. In our recreation department, a 7% increase in personnel expenditures that includes a 3% cost of living, increased part-time hours in that department. Sporting event security increase as well. Russell and I sat down and went through each, each game to figure out how many hours he thinks an officer would need to be at the games for all sporting events, and that's the increase that you see in that line. An increased background checks and screenings to screen all coaches who are coaching our youth. Operating expenditures increased by two. Nothing really stands out. There's just an offset of some increases and decreases in the sporting events due to timing, the opening, and, and what a reduction that we feel may happen in some sports over others. And then an increase in internet expenditures. There is not a par project identified currently. Do you want to explain how that works, Sean?
So the Georgia Street Park Basketball Court was just resurfaced. I believe that was in 2019.
It was 2019.
Part grant, and so we're always kind of in the rears on that. And a lot of times, because I think we only get about $35,000 a year or so, that sometimes we combine two years in order to have additional funding. And so I don't believe we have a, a project already in the works for FY '20. And, but we all, we do know that Fairby Street Park Basketball Court will need to be resurfaced as well. And, and that money is from Greenville County, and so it has to be spent on park facilities that are in Greenville County. Lawrence County does have some par money, but it's a lot less than we would get. I think the most we can get is about $7,000.
So are we planning to do the Fairby Street Basketball Court?
I believe that's either the FY '20 or FY '21 par, that's what that would be for. But the way, you'll see it in the next, next question there.
What's wrong with the entry doors of that community center?
They are not locking correctly, and it's actually to the point now where they're afraid that it may not open or lock anymore. They're just past their useful life.
That hex key, I think.
Exactly.
So it's not the handicap section that opens automatically?
No, it's the door to the right of that.
It's the doors and their locking mechanism that's at those. But we would like to, if at all possible, to do that after the renovation because there's gonna be a lot of in and out of traffic. But I know it is, they're getting pretty, pretty dire over there. They're very concerned that they won't be able to lock those doors anymore.
And the performing arts? In the performing arts department, there's still some debt there. This is the final year of those debt payments in our performing arts department. We move the, the support that we give over to the hospitality tax fund and so that's why you see that large decrease in the performing arts budget. In our commerce park, the expenditures are pretty standard. That's where the fountain, there's some ground maintenance, some landscaping over there. The telephone line for where Ellen has the farmer's market, plug in for credit card machines and things like that. But the utilities and all the other expenditures pretty much remain flat. And that is our general fund. If you want to stop there for questions or just keep rolling on?
Well, yes. And it's, some of it's probably just, I don't understand. So on page one of the general fund, you've got mayor and council expenses proposed. Sixty thousand one hundred nineteen. We go to page fourteen, it says salaries mayor and council is thirty thousand nine seventy-three.
So that's the total of the line. You see that all of the expenditures are sixty thousand one nineteen?
Uh huh.
And so it's pulling in the total of personnel expenditures, not just the salaries.
Okay, got you. I, I figured it was something I didn't understand. On page two, the code enforcement violation fee. We don't have anything budgeted. We don't feel like we'll have any code enforcement citations in twenty twenty-one.
We don't currently have a mechanism to. The last ordinance had a mechanism to charge for it, the one we just implemented. It was a code enforcement for like top grad. It's also mostly for sanitation issues and so we don't bill for those. We send the citations out and then that's, that's it. Lori, you want to?
So, yeah, Tanya and I worked together on that. So when, after they get a first notice certified letter and they get a certain time to comply, grass seven days if it's a stronger issue over time. If they do not comply, then we issue a court summons. It goes to Tanya, to court and then the judge rolls what that.
Okay, so files come to you now.
The fines are actually determined by, by the judge itself and what the actual person makes of completing or didn't complete or anything like that.
Got you. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry.
Is that how most people, most of you work?
Because usually by the time they usually get to court, it's already taken care of, situated done. So it's kind of like a slap on the hand, hey, this is what's going to happen if we continue to come out here. Of course, if they don't do anything, it automatically says on your actual summons itself that you could be fined up to five hundred dollars for not doing what you're supposed to do.
In the, in the future, one of the needed positions that we need is a, is a full-time code enforcement officer. And once that happens, I think we would look at revamping our process. Some of the larger cities that have a full-time code enforcement officer have a, a few mechanisms that can make that a little quicker.
Okay. I think the last question I have is, is why on page fifteen, the significant reduction in salaries for special events?
That was once the community development directors department and so that position was dissolved.
Lifted over there.
Went to planning and development.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for a general fund? In our road improvement fund, there was, you'll see the transfer from our natural gas department of fifty thousand dollars. Our, our annual revenue we receive from Greenville County and then what's not reflected is our contribute capital from Greenville GLDTC. I'm not even trying to add NRCTC. And Sean, do you want to explain how that, that works?
So the, we actually get two sources of revenue from Greenville County. One is straight from the county government and the other is a municipal match that we have through the Greenville County Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee. It's a mess, but and that, yeah, that's how that's funded. This past year, the municipal match roads were over in the Eagle Watch subdivision. I believe the next ones that should be starting next are in Quail Run. And, but I also have the engineering firm doing our sidewalk and road inventory assessment for us. And so when we receive that, we will have better data in order to submit roads to the transportation committee. And so with some better data and showing that this, these are the roads that need to be replaced or, or resurfaced and in what order. As opposed to now, it's kind of the eyeball test and where we get most complaints and, and that sort of thing.
And that's only for Greenville County roads?
Correct. Lawrence County has a, a CTC as well. Every county transportation committee in the state is run a little differently. Greenville County one actually offers all of the municipalities every year a percentage of the revenue that they receive. And so that is what we get from, as a municipal, municipal match. So if we said, I think we're eligible for it's around forty thousand or so, we have to match that. In Lawrence County, there's no dedicated set funds. So what they do is they literally, their committee drives the roads in Lawrence County and identifies the ones that they feel like need to be resurfaced. And they could, and can only resurface usually about ten a year. And we've asked them to, to resurface some, some of the Lawrence County roads and they're, it's on their list. They just haven't made it to the resurfacing in some time.
Do we need a bump?
So Mr. Bo Curry is now our delegate for this area on that, on that committee. So it was Mr. Yance, who is now the Green, or the Lawrence County Councilman for this area. And so he had to be, he had to leave the CTC and he was replaced by Bo Curry. So when we have roads and they can, the local or DOT roads or county roads, we need to get that list to the Lawrence CTC.
Yeah, cause we got some roads we need to get taken care of.
Definitely.
And so the spreadsheet does not include which funds again? You said it doesn't include.
It doesn't include the funds from the match from the GLDTC because it's not actual monies received by us. It's shown on our financial statements as an asset once the project's completed.
Gotcha. They cut the check, they don't send us the money.
Right.
Is Jonesville Road still a county road or do we take that everywhere? See what brought that into the city?
Where, from Quillen that extends on Jonesville? That is a DOT road.
I did not create a slide for our local option sales tax. You see it as a transfer. It's money coming in, transferred out to the general fund. So I didn't create a slide for that. Our solid waste fund.
And that local option sales tax is only in Lawrence County.
Right.
Greenville County does not have a local option sales tax and they don't have any sales tax either.
For our solid waste fund, like I talked about earlier, streets department was restructured. All of those sanitation and solid waste expenditures and general fund are now in solid waste fund requiring that transfer from general fund. Personnel expenditures increased by ninety-one percent as a hundred percent of all those salaries are now in the solid waste fund. Like this current fiscal year, fifty percent of them was budgeted in the streets and the other fifty percent in sanitation. And it just was a, an accounting nightmare. Operating expenditures increased by thirty-two percent to account for the restructuring. And the capital for this fiscal year proposed is debt funded for a garbage truck and a debris truck.
Want to talk a little bit about that. So as you all probably are aware, probably the number one complaint that we get from our city services in Fountain is related to trash and debris pickup. And I would not say it's necessarily because of our employees. It's just a lack of manpower, lack of equipment. During COVID nineteen, none of the inmates were available. But I will say that morale for the department increased because of not having to deal with the inmates. We are at a point now where, starting Monday, we will only have one vacancy in the public works department and that's a CDL driver. And with this budget as proposed, we would be adding an additional crew worker. Both of these pieces of equipment can be operated by just a driver. And so with that additional crew worker and if, and when we can fill that CDL position, if an additional garbage truck, that is an automated side load and an additional debris truck like the one we purchased this year, we basically will not have to, we, we can be inmate free as far as all trash pickup goes, which I think is, is a good thing. We can still utilize inmate labor for other things such as grass mowing, litter pickup, but I think relying on a, a set number of inmates per day that we have to go pick, drive about an hour to go pick them up and then every day have to drive about an hour to drop them back off, I think is going to be a, a win for the city.
So we will have enough full-time staff? Once we have all of this growth, do residential and feel good about being able to handle all that?
So I think, so I think at the moment, getting this garbage truck and this debris truck puts us to where we basically need to be now. I think as we continue to get additional subdivisions, I think that's something that we're going to have to continue to, to look at. But I think that gets us finally, I, I think we were currently just behind the eight ball. I just don't think we have enough manpower when having to rely on those inmates. Some days we would get five, some days we got ten or more. And that, and they're also usually different every day, which is very difficult to train. Most of the time they're on our rear load garbage trucks, which is one of the most dangerous positions in any municipality. So it's, it's a worker's comp nightmare. There's just a lot of issues with it.
Okay, my only concern, that would be that if you do have trash pickup and your trash cleaners run a note, they're not going to pick up the trash from the ground. And then if they buy extra container to pick it up, I've seen it, even on my street, I've seen it when, I'm not trying to be accusing them about it, but I've seen how when they sit the trash can down, some of them slams down, the wheels come off and then now you're being responsible for getting another trash can when it wasn't your fault. And so when you try to bring that scenario up to the, up to the forefront of the world, I know. But see, sometimes the city doesn't, when they slam the trash can down and wheels flies off and now you still put a trash can on the side of the road with wheels off and it's your responsibility.
So.
And if you got trash on the ground, the trash truck will not pick it up. It only going to get what's in the barrel. Now when you come back out and you're like, why didn't you pick my trash up? Well, they did. It just went in the barrel. Well, I bought an extra barrel and they slammed it down and wheels come off. So you're going to know.
We did budget for an increase in, in, in trash containers. So that we can have money to replace trash cans that we have broken accidentally. I will say that the lifespan of one of those trash cans is not meant to be twenty or thirty years. There are, there are many in the city that, that have the, have trash cans that were probably purchased in the eighties.
When people take care of this stuff, when you've been a good steward of taking care of this stuff, because if you have the twenty or thirty years, if it's still usable in good condition, what give you the right to come and slam it and tear it up?
So there was a learning curve and there's still, and there will be.
A learning curve. I watched them last Friday. I was like, I want to know.
Especially as, if we get another automated side load, which is an additional driver, we'll have to, have to learn how to do that.
Well, there's a finesse to it because I know I have one of the older trash cans that's more durable than the new ones, but and I can't close my lid all the way. I have to pop it out because the way it's pushed. And I did watch the gentleman on last Friday through my neighborhood, he wasn't gentle in setting those trash cans down. They were like boom, boom, boom. I'm like, okay, someone's not happy this morning.
The other problem with the side load is the winds blowing, trash is flying out and nobody's picking it up. It's just hitting our streets and going around.
Yes.
Okay. So that's another thing we need to look at.
But there's also a problem about some, some of the latches on the older roofs like mine won't come off automatically. And if you just leave it off, it'll wait it'll re-latch it.
Yeah, eventually we'd like to get to a point where all of the trash containers in the city are the kind that, that don't fasten where so when the trash can is being tipped, the lid comes this way and then it closes back down without actually having a latch. It's going to take some time. It's going to take, you know, us replacing some, it's going to take customers replacing some.
Everybody got the note, they put them on everybody trash can, they turn it a certain way. And if you're, if it's turned a different way, your trash will get picked up. So there's no excuse for the, the excuse is that if your trash can is turned the right way and it's still getting broken, then what do you do?
You, you call public works and we'll, we'll investigate it. And if we, if we, if we did it, we've been replacing them. Lori, I know gets a lot of those calls and we have them.
They also offer to replace, if it's a wheel, they keep a stock of those things and they'll come by and do it for you. If they notice it, they'll take note of it. And I do agree, it takes finesse. I have a war if you fly out of the thing today out of my control.
So can I put a voiding for new door here?
Well, and I, I have another issue that I'm, I'm having in Fountainbrook is, you know, people not turning the trash cans the right way, even though we've tried to get the word out. But also comes a lot of people who've moved in. And so the new people come in, if they look at their green garbage can, it says arrows point to the road on that garbage can. So that's been an issue too. I'm trying to let, on my end, let everybody know handle space to the house away from the road, but that's still a problem too. And then I've got people like, no one pick my, my trash and we've got lots of trash on the side of the road. Picking up for the main has been an issue where the, you know, you can, whatever you can bring to the road, leave it. There hasn't been any consistent pickup, but that it's been, it's, you know.
I think we need to make some pretty significant changes to that program, to the, to the main cleanup. It, it overwhelms the department even when there's not a global pandemic. And so I, I think maybe we need to look at spacing it out, maybe do one week of it four times a year. Or, or something along those lines, but having an entire month like that just puts us too far behind. The stickers that we initially put on all of the, all of the cans didn't stay. So we are going to be ordering some vinyl ones that are going to stick. And then the mayor has also, I believe he shot a video PSA or working on it. And we're going to post out there for people to show them
How to protect them.
which way to put the can. A lot of that's just a marketing. It's a communications piece.
And to understand why, because I think, you know, people think it may not matter, but as we get new trucks that acquire less people, while we do have some rear loaders over time, we may not have those anymore. And so that's why we're focusing on it. We also don't know necessarily which truck will pick up which, which route each day. So one day you could have the side loader, one day you could have the rear loader. So it's best to go and put it the right way. So we, I talked to public works about, you know, how do we, every, what are, every point that we communicate with the citizens. So we're also look at, you know, those, those door hanger things. It's something like maybe one consistent time a year as a reminder. For people also putting in the, the chamber offers welcome packets for any new resident. So if they want to come by and grab a packet all up Fountain, there'll be something there about that. Crash pickup. Obviously our new website, I think will help a lot and making it easier to find, that's the deal. When they don't understand it. I think we have to also explain why it's this one. It's the equipment. It cuts down our staff costs. It's faster. The, the side arm is, is a lot faster than the rear loader. So. I don't disagree. I think, I think we, I think we also need to, we also, yeah, it's also safer. I mean, you got, I can tell you got cars driving by. And also you don't have to touch the trash with your hands. So I think we have to communicate it a little bit better too. And that's something I don't know we're all working on. So it's going to start with some better stickers though.
Yeah, mine is like built on.
Yeah, mine's gone, and I got the can like four months ago.
Nothing but trash, huh?
So finally, we did mention that we did not include a millage increase in this proposed budget, but wanted to provide you with the information and what we could do. That's, that's allowable for the municipalities to do. So we could raise our millage by, you know, having right in front of me, we need it. By twenty point seven three mils. That would generate seven hundred and three thousand dollars in revenue. Or there is a, there's two point five six mils that we will lose because of the lookback. If we do not increase mils by the two point five six, we'll lose it. That would be eighty-six thousand dollars in revenue if we included it. There are obvious items that we did not fund and that, that could help, but we did not propose it for this budget. That would mean fifteen dollars on a hundred fifteen, hundred fifty thousand dollar home at the two point five six mils. We wouldn't even, the, the millage for the twenty mils, the dollar amount, sorry, the increase would be a hundred and twenty-four dollars. So we want a hundred fifty thousand dollar home. Like I said, we did not include it, but wanted to make sure you had the information, just in case you wished to add a millage increase.
So it's, it's a bit complicated the way this works. So Act 388 allows municipalities to increase their, their millage by a certain percentage each year. And that's based on CPI, which is given to all of us. This year that CPI was one point eight one percent. And then they also base it on your population growth in, in the past year. So our population growth this past year was four point two six percent. So we were eligible by law in this year to raise millage by just over six percent, which is three point nine two. But then what they also allow you to do is what we call a millage bank or a three-year lookback. So if you don't raise your millage by the allowable amount that year, you have up to the past three years to kind of keep that in the bank in case you need it. And so after, after three years, that allowable increase just rolls off. And so this year, if, if we did not increase it by two point five six, that's going to drop off. I think the big one was last year where we had a population increase of over fifteen percent. So we were allowed to increase millage by eighteen point two one percent. But that, Act 388 also works for the fire district millage as well. And so we would, when we look to go to Greenville County at funding a, a millage increase there, we would have that millage bank in order to do so.
And the last increase was?
So this current fiscal year, we, we dropped the reserve millage because we met our reserve and just shifted those two mils over to operating. But the seventy-six point one millage stayed the same. So we didn't increase our operating, but technically overall, there was no increase.
I believe it's been close to ten years.
That's what I was thinking, it was that, sometime.
So I, I would say at some point, I don't think this is a good year for council to do it. But I do think at some point that, that's something that cities need to be doing on a consistent basis. Is increasing millage by at least a little bit every year. So you're not at a point later on where you've got to raise it by a massive amount. I would also say the same thing for our solid waste fee. Right now, it averages to thirteen dollars a month for trash service, which is still, I think, pretty reasonable compared to other municipalities and the private sector. I think that is something that in the future, if you wanted to raise it by fifty cents or a dollar to get it a little bit more competitive, so where five years down the road, we're not having to increase it by a substantial amount again.
We raised that several years ago.
Two years ago is when we had to have a pretty massive increase, where it was two dollars and something and was raised to thirteen.
That, that is, that is all I have for the presentation. Next week is our public hearing on June fourth, and also first reading of the budget. And so prior to that, we will have the fee schedule finalized, a budget transmittal letter. And if you have any questions between then, and would like us to, to follow up on any questions or any questions for Sean to relay back to the department heads, please do so. I will be getting this put together hopefully by Tuesday to give the packet to you all so that you have enough time to go through it, read the budget transmittal letter, look at the fee schedule, the budget warrants as well. I appreciate your time and thank you again, department heads. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, my Sean.
Thanks.
Mayor, did you have specific questions?
No, I just, I was just going to thank Naomi and staff, department heads and Sean for all the work we've put this together with all the uncertainty around COVID, coming out with a balanced budget that I think serves our employees well and our citizens well. So thank you so much for that.
There is one last topic I, I did want to cover, and that is, it was a little, little over a year ago that we passed an education incentive pay policy for our police and fire in which all, all police and fire employees who have an associate's degree would receive a thousand dollars additional each year. If, if they had a bachelor's degree, they would receive two thousand. And if they had a master's or above, they'd receive three thousand per year. But also the same went for EMT. So if you had an EMT basic certification, you got the, the thousand per year. If you had the advanced EMT, two thousand. If you are a paramedic, you got the three thousand. There, that was done for a variety of reasons. The main one was to retain and attract talent. Our police and firefighters were, were getting snatched up from other communities left and right. I would say largely that has been relatively calm at the moment. We have a police and fire department right now that are fully staffed. I, I think the incentive pay has helped. I think just good management and, and getting better equipment and things like that has helped as well. But over on the fire side, one of the things that we were trying to accomplish was to get more EMT certification as, to provide a better or higher quality of service for our citizens. Often in Greenville and in Lawrence County, it can take an ambulance anywhere from thirty minutes or, or more to, to reach a, a home, whereas our firefighters can be at your house within minutes. And it, and it is, it has saved lives. Our firefighters have saved lives. And so we were trying to encourage more EMTs. I think a few issues that we've run into is that we are paying out quite a bit more than we initially anticipated. Right now, annualized, we're looking at close to forty-five thousand dollars a year for this education incentive. The other one is that the policy doesn't talk about the degree being associated with your job. So we do have some instances where either a police or a firefighter may have a bachelor's or a master's degree in something that is not in management, it may not be in criminal justice, it may not be in fire. It could be something completely unrelated. And then I think the other, other issue that has rubbed some people wrong ways is that it's not citywide. And that, you know, we have employees in other departments that have degrees that have, have not been compensated additionally. Right now, we, well, as of a day or two ago, we didn't think we'd be able to, to fund it as is. We, we do have the money to be able to fund this as is. But I do think a revamp of the policy is, is going to be necessary. I think I would wait for the new human resources individual to come on board. I talked to the mayor yesterday a little bit about it. And I think maybe the idea, maybe we can continue with the EMTs and, and, you know, that being such a great service to our, our citizens. But maybe we want to have it more, the degrees be associated with the job. Maybe we want to incentivize those that maybe are, have an associate's degree but are looking to advance their career, to get them a, a bachelor's degree. So maybe be more of a tuition reimbursement. There, there's a number of different things that we can do. But we, what we don't want it to be seen as, you know, taking pay away from, from our police and fire. I, I think that that has been a nice, nice bonus for those individuals as is. But I don't know if it's sustainable to continue paying that annually every year.
I would have to, because I've been out of law enforcement for many years. I'd have to defer to Chief Hamilton on some of this. But my understanding would be is that if you have an associate's or a bachelor's degree, it's not necessarily tied to being in criminal justice or management in order to get that incentive pay at many agencies, is it?
No, there's not.
I didn't think so. So we'll be stepping out of bounds a little bit with that. I'm not going to speak to the fire department. And I think we would be stepping out of bounds as well to compensate other departments that have a bachelor's degree. That's part of, that, that's part of getting the job, in my mind. So that's just my opinion.
You say?
I was thinking the same thing, Phil, is some of these jobs require a certain level of education.
Correct.
And so that's, you're, you're compensated for that type of job with that level of education. So, yeah.
I want us to be careful with that, with when the eyes wide open.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, I, I see that too. My only concern is if, and this is a question I think I asked Sean to, asking David about.
He said it was legal.
Okay, okay, good, okay, that, that, that's good feedback. I didn't, my, my concern that is now alleviated was the same thing that happened with the Terry program where the state Supreme Court said you can't have classes of employees facing with some sort of incentive. That was my, my concern that, because it's, I, I assume because it's targeted in some way.
Correct.
That it's, that it's probably different, but that was my main concern that now.
Well, I, I certainly conceived incentive with the EMTs and paramedics and that, and that level. I don't know, I guess, I haven't seen what we currently have on the books for that. So maybe reviewing that and looking at, you know, proposed changes to that would be.
I think Rebecca can help us with that.
Absolutely.
The salary study that you did in Miami, is that already going to affect when we brought employees' pay up to the minimum? Is that reflected in the budget, or?
So we adopted the common class survey and we did phase one this current fiscal year. Phase two is done in, in part this year. The COLAs bring people close to the mid-range or halfway to the mid-range. The intent prior to the revenues being affected by COVID, the intent was to bring certain employees who had been here over ten years directly to the mid-range, six years and, to ten years halfway to the mid-range, and then everyone else get a three percent COLA. It just was, we was not able to fund that with the revenues as they were coming in. So everyone getting a three percent COLA. When you look at the common class survey, they may have come close to their mid-range or halfway to the mid-range.
I will say though, that in the last several years, the, the cost of living increase had been two percent. And some of those weren't done, or weren't, didn't go into effect until that poison anniversary date as well. And so this is a three percent, which is higher, but it also goes into effect July one. So I, I would say that it's, it's, even in addition to what we did last year, I think this is a bigger increase than, than, than the city has done in, in years.
So the employees have already been brought to their salary.
To the minimum.
They would still be getting that three percent.
They'll be getting three, three on top of that.
Correct.
I look forward to our HR director looking at pay for performance and total revision of compensation merit increases and so forth. That's, that's something that in my mind is critical, to retain our best employees and bring our other employees that are not performing at a level that we expect potentially up.
I also had a city employee talk to me today about the health insurance and saying that he's going to see an increase in pay because of the, he's getting the same money on his healthcare. He was real appreciative of that, and that adds to the mix of, to some employees who maybe have a family on it, maybe not, not individuals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Sean, do you have anything additional?
I do not. Monday, June first, is the, the plan for all city facilities, for the most part, to, to open back up to the public. City Hall, police, fire, municipal court is still not. That's been more or less dictated by, by the state. And then we are planning on, kind of in mid-June, doing a reopening of the Activity Center and kind of phasing that in. And the Fountain Natural Gas Lobby will also be open on Monday as well. All of our parks facilities are, are open. Splash pad, I believe, is, is, is running at the moment. So just about everything is, is back open.
I think you're working on a press release.
Yeah, I'll be releasing something tomorrow to the effect of, you know, kind of.
Where everything is.
Yep, circle, dialing back all those other restrictions that we have.
So I'm, I'm sorry I couldn't make the, the meeting. You guys were able to dial in the Activity Center restrictions?
I'll forward you, he, he wrote.
Okay.
Yeah, and that'll be in the, in the release that I'll send out tomorrow. But basically, we would start with the Activity Center opening, but not have like formal classes. We would allow people to come in and, and walk the gym and that sort of thing. And then the week after, start maybe some of the classes back. We're also looking at doing summer volleyball. That would take place in the gym in the afternoons. But I also say everything at the Activity Center from now until the fall, regardless of COVID, is going to be a little bit.
Different.
Different because of the renovations. The bathrooms are going to be shut down, there's going to be porta-potties outside. The, the fitness center is also getting worked on, so some of that won't be available. There's actually even going to be some renovations in the gym area as well.
Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
I have a second.
Second.
All of theirs, aye, aye, we are adjourned.